Join the triumph of the skies with angelic host proclaim Christ is born in Bethlehem. Heart, the herald angels sing glory to the newborn king. Hark the herald angels sing. Hark the herald, hark the herald, hark the herald angels sing. Oh, hark the herald, hark the herald. Angels, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hark the herald angels sing.
Hark the herald angels sing.
Glory to the newborn king.
Glory to the newborn king.
Just was born in angel's name.
Just was born in angel's name.
And God is here today.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. With angelic host proclaim, oh, Christ is born in Bethlehem. Heart, the herald angels sing glory to the newborn king. Hark the herald, hark the herald, hark the herald angels sing. Oh, hark the herald, hark the herald, hark the herald angels sing. Oh, hark the herald, hark the herald, hark the herald. Yeah. Jesus, he was, he was, Jesus, he was born. Here we come, a caroling amid the falling snow. We gather on your doorstep with faces all aglow. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. Make us bless you and send you a happy new year and God send you a happy new year. We bring you simple melodies to bring a winter down. We bring you happy tidings to fill our heart with light. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. Make us send you a happy new year. God bless this house and Christmas line with all the season's best. Your family round the fire, start your home in your deepest. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. Happy new year and God send you a happy new year.
Thank you. Well, if you lived in the 14th century or perhaps the 16th century, you would be hearing music that is appropriate for the holidays. But in those days, many of the core groups sang something called a madrigal. And madrigals are most often sung a cappella, which means there's no accompaniment. But before I say that, let's give one more round of applause to these two ladies here. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my wonderful accomplice, Mrs. Faschiano. But right now, we take it back 2,400 years, and we're going to sing a cappella, a piece called A Holiday Madrigal.
Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A very merry holiday today, a very holiday. Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A very merry holiday today, a very holiday. All the joy and love abound in sweet the voices, music sounding. Sing we now a song of joy, we sing a song of joy. Seize we now from all our sadness, come we now and share it in gladness. Fa la la la, la la la, la la la, fa la la, la la la. Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A very merry holiday today, a very holiday.
Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1 and subsequent orders closing district schools issued by the Honorable Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, signed March 12, 2020. And due to the concerns of the Board of Education for the health and safety of the community emanating from the current COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no in-person public access to the aforementioned board meeting. And instead, the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Access to livestream can be had by accessing the school district's website for a link that will bring you to a YouTube site. And the recording of the meeting can be accessed on www.farmandaleschools.org. In addition, the public participation portion of the meeting shall be suspended by board resolution. Mrs. D'Amico may I have a motion to suspend public participation?
I make a motion that pursuant to the aforementioned executive orders, the Board is suspending the public participation portion of the meeting. And therefore, accordingly, there will be no public participation at this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please know that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. You may send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, boe@farmandaleschools.org. A member of the district's administrative team will respond to you, and then questions will be publicly addressed at next week's board meeting. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Depp and Danny, can we have your budget update, please?
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Motisi, who will take the Board of Education through what will be our last formal meeting pertaining to the 2021-22 budget. Just as a point, I want to thank Mr. Motisi and his team for the work that he's done in building the budget. I'd also like to thank Mr. Motisi and all those involved who have been a part of the presentation cycle. It has certainly not been an easy cycle, but I know, having been there firsthand, Mrs. Lively, Mrs. D'Amico have also been there firsthand. We have tried to get to as many groups as possible, whether or not it's live or virtual. And it's definitely been an adventure this year, but I think we've done a nice job trying to get ourselves to in front of as many people as possible. Most notably, the PTA, who was also wonderful in hosting a great town hall-style meeting with a bunch of PTA members. We actually had one of the largest turnouts we've ever had. More than 80 people were part of that meeting, and the PTA was good enough at that point to also endorse the budget and provide their support. So, thank you to Mike, thank you to the PTA, thank you to the community who's been really great about working with us and trying to get a whole bunch of different opportunities to present and talk about the budget for the upcoming school year. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Mike for one last hurrah before the budget actual vote, which is planned for next Tuesday at the Howard Middle School West Gymnasium during the hours from 6 o'clock in the morning until 9 o'clock PM. So, Mr. Motisi, your show.
Thank you, Paul. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Brian and Diane from the business office, Roe from my office, for, you know, all the work that they do to really pull all of this data together, to pull all these presentations together. They really make sure that it's all there and all ready for us each and every week. It's nonstop, right, from January through now. And just again, to thank, you know, the community and the Board for all of their support and the opportunities that we've had this year. It's definitely been a strange year for me with the presentations, because I got to do both this year, right? I got to be live, and I got to be in person in a couple instances. And I kind of miss the in-person part. The Google and the live streaming is great, but there's definitely something to be said about actually being in the room with people as you're trying to talk to them. So, looking forward to that, hopefully, in the future, because I know it's coming. Tonight's meeting, tonight's presentation is really a summary of everything that we've been talking about for the past three months. All of the past presentations that go into all of the detail with the budget are posted to the district's website. Anyone that's interested could always find them there. You can always reach out to me with any questions that you have or call. You know, we have received some participation from the community, some questions to date. Particularly, a lot of the questions surrounding the reopening of schools and what school will look like in the fall. And a little bit around the money, but a lot of it was focused around schools reopening. And then that's really, I think, telling in where the community is right now. You know, I think everyone's eager to get back to in-person learning. They're eager to get our doors open again. And yeah, I think we're almost there. I mean, at least that's what it feels like, right? So, with that being said, let me just move on to the first slide here. This is the 2021-22 Proposed Revenue Budget. As you can see, we are having an increase year-over-year from $173,76,607 to $174,915,558. This increase year-over-year represents a 1.51% increase in the tax levy. That increase is within the New York State levy limit, and it is in line with what we were seeing about the average for other Nassau County school districts. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, what happened with the state aid runs and, you know, how that was affecting schools. And I thought it would just be important to get out there one more time and say that as a district, Farmingdale is shorted annually about $8 million in foundation aid. That number is a number, excuse me, that arrived at a number of years ago when the foundation aid formula, which is the largest portion of the district's state aid. When that formula was developed, if it had been allowed to run as it normally would year after year, we would receive $8 million more in state aid. So that 3.4 million number on the, I'm sorry, $34.2 million number on the screen would actually be about $6 million higher from what it is projected to be for the 2021-22 school year. And the reason I say six and not eight is because we are forecasted to receive an additional 2.2 in foundation aid. So, part of the governor's, or I should say, the state budget for this next coming year was that districts that have been shorted foundation aid would start to get their fair share, and there would be a three-year phase-in of the full amount. So, with that being said, the district is expecting to receive the full $8 million over the next three school years. We do tread lightly with that piece of legislation because we have heard it before. So, we always, as we always do, plan our budgets accordingly, and we don't bank on anything until we actually see it actually happen. So, our budgets are always designed that way, and this budget does exactly that. Also in line with that increase is what we did is we lowered the reliance or the use of the appropriated fund balance this year in order to balance the revenue side of the budget. And that was in particular because of the loss that the district has experienced as a result of COVID. There were a number of unfunded mandates that have come our way to the tune of about $3.5 million that we're expecting to lose this year through operating and through our operating results. That's primarily from the, you know, the purchases of PPE, desk barriers, remote teachers, additional salary expenditures, additional technology and connectivity expenditures, all of which was not planned for. And in addition, we lost out on state aid this year as a result of certain expenses from the 1920 year that did not take place. Transportation aid was one of them, some special education costs. So, a loss of revenue and increased unplanned expenditures are really contributing to the loss that the district is projecting to have at the end of the 2021 school year. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget or the cost element side of the budget, a little bit lower of an increase year-over-year, 1.8 million or 1.06% increase on the expenditure side of the budget. The largest portion of the increases on this side of the budget are coming in the form of salaries and employee benefits. Salaries are contractual obligations. Year-over-year step increases are what is actually built into the cost element summary slide and the salary projections. And then the employee benefits, we're seeing slight increases in the pension systems and the health system as a result of everything that was happening with the pandemic. All in all, the increases were favorable in comparison to years past, but nonetheless, there were some slight increases there. In addition, moving down the line a little bit, we have our contractual 4% increase in transportation costs. This is year, that will be year two, 21-22 will be year two of the new transportation contract. So that was a projected and forecasted expense that we knew was going to be there. And then right after that, you see a bunch of red numbers. And really what happened there was a great effort by the admin team and the district to really take a look, a long, hard look at the budget and say, where can we make necessary reallocations and reductions without impacting the programs, right? So, what we saw was a year like none other. And our goal was to say, in September, we want to be back live. We want to be back in person with instruction, and we want to make sure that everything's there that everyone is used to having. So, we had to actually think back to, you know, to the beginning of 1920. What did 1920 look like and feel like? And we wanted to make sure that we were able to offer all of the same opportunities and the same programs and the same services that everyone expects to receive. And in order to do that, we charged our admin team to take a long, hard look at their budgets and make a 10% reduction where possible in non-contract salary codes. And between that and the reallocation of one-time expenditures, we actually were able to get there. And as you can see right there, that's a little over $2 to $2.5 million worth of reductions and reallocations that were taken in order to make that happen. And all of this, you know, prior to us finding out anything about the state aid piece or anything that, in addition, that might be coming. One last piece that I did forget to mention was that there were a few retirements on the instructional side. And we were able to work with our administrators to make sure that some of these, most of these retirements were able to be absorbed back into the budget with minimal impact on the program. So, the admin team got together and was able to really make that happen. And then lastly, at the bottom is the capital projects increase. There's a slight increase there, $700,000, which is being used primarily projects that were supposed to be done this year. Because of COVID, it didn't happen. We had to reallocate those funds in order to meet the needs and the demands, really, of these unfunded mandates on the school system. Really, most of it was pushed forward into next year. An example of one of them, Albany Avenue Playground. We had some safety concerns over the current playground there. We keep repairing it, but it's time to have it replaced. That was built into this year's budget. We used the funds for other reasons, and now it's been moved into next year's budget. And there are a few other safety upgrades and safety projects that are built into there that we will, that the community and the students and staff will see when they come back in September. The contingent budget, 2021-22 contingent budget. So basically, the way it works is if the budget were to fail on Tuesday of next week, then school districts or the Board of Education has an option to put up the same budget or change the budget for a second vote in June. Should that budget then fail a second time, we go to what is known as a contingent budget, which in its simplest form means no increase in the tax levy year-over-year. So, in order to make that happen, the district would have to look at the budget and make $1,957,112 worth of reductions out of the 2021-22 budget. Some of the areas that could be affected and would be looked at include, you know, increases in class sizes, certain electives, certain equipment codes, extracurricular activities, and non-essential support services. Just summing it up one last time so that the Board and the community gets one last look at it before we move on to the other propositions. But the 2021-22 proposed budget is $174,915,558, which represents a $1,838,951 increase year-over-year, 1.06% increase in the budget with a proposed tax levy increase of 1.51%, which again, is in line with Farmingdale's specific tax levy limit calculation. Proposition 1 for the voters is to vote for the annual budget of the school district. That's what this presentation was all about tonight. So that will be Proposition 1 for the voters when they come to vote on Tuesday. Proposition number 2 is for the Farmingdale Youth Council. The youth council will be up and running this summer. It will look a little different than what we've known in the past because we still got a lot of work to do, you know, with getting used to being inside and all that. But the Farmingdale Youth Council will be on, again, on the ballot as Prop 2, which it usually is with a 0% increase in the levy year-over-year. We have three board members. Some of the areas that could be affected and would be looked at include, you know, increases in class sizes, certain electives, certain equipment codes, extracurricular activities, and non-essential support services. Just summing it up one last time so that the Board and the community gets one last look at it before we move on to the other propositions. But the 2021-22 proposed budget is $174,915,558, which represents a $1,838,951 increase year over year, 1.06% increase in the budget with a proposed tax levy increase of 1.51%, which again, is in line with Farmingdale's specific tax levy limit calculation. Proposition one for the voters is to vote for the annual budget of the school district. That's what this presentation was all about tonight. So that will be proposition one for the voters when they come to vote on Tuesday. Proposition number two is for the Farmingdale Youth Council. The youth council will be up and running this summer. It will look a little different than what we've known in the past, because we still got a lot of work to do, you know, with getting used to being inside and all that. But the Farmingdale Youth Council will be on, again, on the ballot as Prop 2, which it usually is with a 0% increase in the levy year over year. We have three board members running for reelection. They are running uncontested. So Kathy, Mario, and Anthony are all running for reelection this year. We have one proposition for, I'm sorry, one opportunity to vote for a member of the library for a five-year term. That's Laura. And the voting information. Vote will be held on Tuesday, May 18, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Howard West Gymnasium. We will have signs and security at the entrance to Howard off of Grant. So if you come in off of Grant where the administrative wing is and the special education office, right in there, there will be signs directing staff where to park and voters where to park. We will be blocking the entire west lot. We will be leaving those parking spots open for the voters. Unfortunately, because of the work that is going on at the Aquatic Center, we don't have the back parking lot open. So we want to make sure that we make it as accessible for residents as we can during the school day. So that entire, we plan on blocking that lot, and security will be out there to make sure that they're able to direct traffic and answer any questions that anyone has. There will be all of the necessary PPE and cleaning and sanitizing in the gymnasium during the vote. Additionally, we will have some tents set up outside in case there is a overflow of people. And some people want to wait outside prior to going in. So we are trying to make all the necessary precautions, take all the necessary precautions to make sure everyone feels safe when they come to vote on Tuesday. And that is all I have for tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board has.
Well, thank you, Mr. Motisi, to you and your staff and the entire central administration and really everyone putting together. I know the budget process is an all-inclusive collaborative process district-wide. So I appreciate all your efforts this year in putting this together, especially with the moving pieces from the state and the federal government.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1, A through D. Be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. I look forward to seeing you at the voting polls, just one short week away, and everyone have a good evening.